Still coming or hot?
No.
Okay. Is there anybody else?
Okay.
You can be right anywhere you want, Madam Chair. I'm happy to be here.
I thought you were singing in.
We're running the show. Do whatever you wish.
Bring up chair.
If Chris could you mic this?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. At this time, I'd like to call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the Meridian Planning and Zoning Commission on October 4th, 2018. And let's begin with roll call.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Fitzgerald?
Here.
Commissioner Perrow?
Here.
Commissioner Cassinelli?
Here.
Commissioner McCarville?
Here.
In absent are Commissioners Wilson, Holland, and Yearsley.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. We do have one item that will be opened only for the purpose of continuing, and that is Item A, H-2018-0059, the Residential District Naming Convention Text Amendment. And that will be opened to be rescheduled on October 18th. So could I get a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
So, second.
It has been moved and seconded to adopt the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, and we have four items on the consent agenda. So could I get a motion to accept those four items as presented?
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to adopt the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So at this time, I would like to briefly explain the hearing process for this evening. We'll open each item individually and then start with staff report. Staff will report their findings regarding how the item adheres to our comprehensive plan and uniform development code with the staff's recommendations. After the staff has made their presentation, the applicant will come forward to present their case for approval and their application and respond to any staff comments. The applicant will have 15 minutes to do so. After the applicant has finished, we will open to public testimony. There is a sign-up iPad in the back, as you entered, for anyone wishing to testify. Any person testifying will come forward and be allowed three minutes. If they are speaking for a larger group like an HOA and there's a show of hands to represent that group, they will be given up to 10 minutes. After all testimony has been heard, the applicant will be given another 10 minutes to have the opportunity to come back and respond if they desire. After that, we will close the public hearing, and the commissioners will have the opportunity to discuss and hopefully be able to make a recommendation to City Council. So at this time, I would like to open the public hearing for Item H-2018-0059, only to be continued to requested October 18th for renotice.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Perrow.
I move to continue File Number H-2018-0071 to the hearing date of October 18th, 2018.
I've got 0059.
I'm sorry, 0059.
Okay. It has been moved and seconded to continue Item H-2018-0059 to October 18th. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So at this time, we'll open the public hearing or continue the public hearing from August 18th, 2018, for Verazo Village North, H-2018-0071. And I think we'll still begin with staff report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. This project was previously before you on August 16th. At that hearing, the commission continued the project for the purpose of reviewing some additional renderings of the proposed building. The applicant has submitted a revised site plan, as shown, landscape plan, and renderings as requested. The revisions resulted in a decrease in dwelling units from 64 to 56, which reduced the density from 38 to 33 units per acre, and the outdoor common area increased slightly. There are a total of 11 additional parking spaces for guests, proposed above the minimum number required by the UDC. So I'll just go through the slides here real quick for you. So this is the, it's a three-story building. This is the ground floor, parking's underneath the building, one-way drive aisles throughout the parking area. This is the second and the third floor, building footprints. There is an open-area courtyard, you can see here. It's kind of divides, it starts on the second floor and divides the second and third stories. The plan on the upper left was the one that was previously shown, that's no longer proposed. Instead, like I said, they're doing the courtyard here, the open one. And these were the original concept elevations that you reviewed at the previous meeting, and these are the proposed elevations. So with that, I'll let the applicant give you more details on his proposal. Thank you.
Any questions for staff at this time? Would the applicant like to come forward?
Chad Olson, 12790 West Telemark Street, Boise, Idaho, 83713. We're back. We redesigned some things. We took some of the counsel from this commission, and, you know, when you come here and you kind of get ready for the meetings and stuff, it's, you know, you don't want to hear no sometimes. But this is one of those times that I really feel like that the advice that we were given and the direction we were given from this commission was very, very helpful for us. One of the items, just right off the bat, that we were told is that it looked like such a big building right across the front. So what we were able to do on that is by lowering our density, we're able to turn another, make the courtyard go a different direction. And in doing so, it kind of broke up the building and gave us a little bit nicer curb appeal. Other than that, basically by just reducing that, that density that we were using, it just really allowed us to have a little more flexibility on the site. It gave us, you know, a little extra parking that, that we needed to gain, that we weren't able to have before. It opened up a couple of different amenities. We now have a, like a dog park area and a dog grooming park, and it just allowed just a lot more flexibility from, from the standpoint. And nobody likes to take less, but that's just how it goes, and sometimes these projects turn out nicer as a result. This is the very final phase of a really nice project that we built. And so I'm just really pleased that sometimes no is the answer you need to hear, and I think that's basically most of the changes that we made. Sonya kind of discussed most of those that we, we kind of revamped and revitalized, and at this point, I stand ready to answer any questions you might have.
So this is just, this is your only proposal now? It's not going to be possibly different numbers of buildings or something? This is?
This is it.
This is the one?
Yeah. We were, if, what had kind of triggered that the time before was being too close to the property line of the, of our property we already owned. But rather than go back and do a lot line adjustment and, you know, trying to cram it all in there, we were just able to say, look, let's just back off a little bit, put a little more open space. And I think that generally, you know, in reality, we lost eight units. It's not going to kill us.
Yeah, I, I think it's turned out great.
It's better to have 56 very outstanding, nice units than it is to have 64 okay units. The parking garage, we were able to change that to angled parking, which is 10 times more convenient than it is to have like straight-on 90-degree parking. So just a lot of different things that came out, and it gave us a little more time. Once we kind of understood what we had, we were able to go and get a nice rendering to, to show people what we wanted to do there and make it a little clearer for you, for the commission to be able to, to vote on it.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant?
Okay.
Thank you. Chris, do we have anybody signed up for public testimony this evening?
Madam Chair, no one has signed in for this project.
That being said, is there anyone in the room who's here that would like to testify on this application? Okay.
Madam Chair.
Oh, Commissioner Fitzgerald?
Sorry, I know this is just a conditional use permit, but these designs go with this application, correct?
Chairman Commissioners, yes. It will be conditions of approval that the applicant substantially comply with these elevations and site plan.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. So at this time, could we get a motion to close the public hearing for Item H-2018-0071?
Madam Chair, so moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to close the public hearing on H-2018-0071. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I think they did a fabulous job. I know, I thought we all, I thought it looked good the first time around, but there was questions on how many buildings, and it could be this, it could be that, but I think if this is what it's going to be, I think it looks fabulous.
Madam Chair. Can I speak? Sorry, ma'am.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
I'm joking. I think it, I think it looks great. I commend the applicant for taking comments made by the, or the commission and taking that to heart and bringing us a product that I think is, will be well-serving the community, but also serving your customers. And so I appreciate the, the work we can do together to come up with a design that is, is a positive for the community, and I appreciate it. So I think it looks great, and we'll move forward in supporting it.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Perrow.
I, I really like, I, I think the height change is great. I like to, I, I noticed that, that it's shorter than it was before, and I think some of the design, the architectural design that, that you did with, with sort of the metalwork, it just, it looks really nice, so.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Fitzgerald.
If Commissioner Cassinelli doesn't have any comments, I, besides, I will make a motion, but thank you for putting parking underneath the building.
Yes.
I am so happy that we want to see asphalt. So with that, Madam Chair, I would move, after considering all staff applicant and public testimony, I move to approve File Number H-2018-0071 as presented in the staff report for the hearing date of October 4th.
What was that last part? For the hearing date of October 4th.
Yeah.
Second, that motion.
It has been moved and seconded to recommend approval on H, or to approve H-2018-0071. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Congratulations.
Thank you. With that, we will open the public hearing for Smith Rezone, H-2018-0097, and we'll begin with staff report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. The next application before you is, or?
West.
Excuse me, sorry. For first for a rezone. Sorry.
All right. Are we on? Okay. This site consists of .73 of an acre of land. It's owned CC, located at 1321 and 1323 North Main Street. Adjacent land use and zoning to the north is commercial office uses, Zone CC. To the east is North Main Street and commercial office and residential uses, Zone CC. To the south is a funeral home, Zone CC, and to the west is residential and vacant undeveloped land and a personal service beauty salon, Zone CC. There are two existing structures on this site. Let me go to the Google Earth view here real quick. The one at the front of the property was constructed in 1937. That's this one right here. Has a residential dwelling and was converted to a commercial structure in 2001. The structure at the rear of the property was constructed in 1983 and was converted to a commercial use in 2001. So this is the front structure proposed to be converted to a dwelling, and then this is the rear structure. A rezone of .73 of an acre of land is proposed from the CC zoning district to the Old Town zoning district. It's requested consistent with the Old Town Future Land Use Map designation. The two existing structures on the site are proposed to remain. The structure at the rear of the property houses the Calico Cattery, primarily a retail store with ancillary cat boarding. And the front structure is proposed to be converted from commercial back to residential use. Access is provided for this site via two one-way drive aisles, to and from Main Street. Staff and ACHD recommends these accesses remain with no changes. When and if the property redevelops in the future with a more intense use, access may be restricted to a single access and cross-access easements may be required to adjacent properties, but not at this time. UDC requires off-street parking to be provided based on the square footage of the residential structure and the number of bedroom in the dwelling units. Go back to this map real quick here. Based on the square footage of the structure, 1,560 square feet of the commercial structure and the number of bedrooms, three in the proposed residential dwelling, a minimum of seven spaces are required. There are currently six paved parking spaces for the shared use, and additional, one additional space is required to be provided on the site in order to comply with the minimum UDC standards. Approval of the proposed rezone will allow the residential use in the OT zoning districts. Currently, the residential use is prohibited in the CC district. There was no written testimony received on this application. Staff is recommending approval with the requirement of a development agreement per the provisions in Exhibit B of the staff report. Staff will stand for any questions.
Any questions for staff?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Cassinelli.
Sonya, what are, you just mentioned Old Town allows for residential. What are some of the, maybe some of the other differences between the CC and the, and the Old Town other than?
Well, the?
What could they do? I guess what could, you know, what, what, what would the Old Town allow them to do other than the resid, other than use it for residential?
I'll answer you in a roundabout way. The Old Town zoning district that they're requesting is consistent with the Old Town Future Land Use Map designation. CC zoning district is more intense than an Old Town zoning district. It allows higher intense commercial uses. The Old Town district allows residential and a mix of lower intense commercial uses. So we're looking at service-type uses, residential, office-like, commercial-type uses. If you'd like, if you'd like me to bring up a use table, I'm not sure if you can read it very good on your screens, but I'm.
No, just, just kind of that, that broad overview was helpful.
Old Town district's more, more consistent with the comprehensive plan than what it's owned right now.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff? Would the applicant like to come forward?
I think Sonya hit it pretty good.
Okay. Please state your name and address.
My name is Scott Smith, 2286 North Glenfield Way, Meridian, Idaho, 83642, I'm sorry, 83646. Yeah, she hit it pretty good. What I'm looking at doing is turning that front building there into a residential building for myself and my son, and then the back building will stay as it is and be retail in the, it's the Calico Cat, I think it's called the Calico Cattery. So she's a good, good tenant. When I bought the property, I was very impressed with it and the fact that I never thought I'd own a cat house, okay? But I do, so. And it's legal, okay? But it's, it's a very, it's a very polished, polished place. It's a place that we can be proud of having in downtown Meridian, and so will the house be when I'm done with it.
Any questions for the applicant? I do have one. Staff recommended that you have one more parking spot. Are, are you okay with that, or?
Yeah, I am. The only question, Bill, on that, I thought, and it's just a confusion, but I thought I was good with six when we talked at one time. But if it's, if it's seven, I guess, is it very flexible on where I can have the spot? Is it, I mean, can it go on the side? Can it go on the, does it matter where? It's got to be paved, I assume, right?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yeah. Madam Chair, members of the commission, yeah, we're flexible where you can put that additional parking spot.
Yeah, because I don't, one nice thing about that, the business that's back there, there's usually only one or two cars there at any given time. And then with myself, it'll only be one or two cars with myself and my son. So if I can able to put one in the back, that'd be fantastic.
Okay.
Or on the side, or on the side there would be good, too.
So is the home currently used as part of the business?
No.
What, what is the use of the home?
It'll be my house, my residence.
It's currently your residence?
I wish. No, not yet.
Okay.
What's it currently being used for?
Nothing. I'm, I'm going to restore it and fix it up.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Fitzgerald.
It was a commercial use up until now, until you bought it, correct?
Yeah, it was, I, I don't know how they did it. It was pretty rough on the inside, but yeah.
And do you have, I mean, is your vision for this to redevelop it in the future, or that space, or is it, would you want to maintain? As we're growing downtown, I just want to, your vision for that property?
I'd like to give you a good answer for it. I don't know. You know, right now, what I'd like to do is make that thing a top-notch place, one of the nicest, the places right to the two left of me right there, as you go south, are fantastic buildings. One of them is the Realtors' Place, Ron, I forget his last name, and the other one's the Funeral Home, very good-looking houses. It'll look the same, if not better than the two of those. What I plan on doing with it, right now, I plan on it being my residence. Now, five, 10 years down the road, I don't know. It's a great piece of property. It's on two-thirds of an acre, that's why I bought it.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, just want to share with you that we met with Scott during the pre-application meetings, met with him before he had a pre-application meeting with staff, actually, and we talked about many different possibilities for what he can do on this particular property. So I do appreciate Mr. Cassinelli's comments on what does Old Town allow versus CC zoning or commercial zoning. Now, the reason why we're here for the rezone is because the current CC zone doesn't allow residential use, and Old Town does. So that's why we're here rezoning this evening. So just keep that in mind, but if he were to redevelop, there's potential for multifamily on this site, more intense, so he can convert, add more units on the site without having to come back through a public hearing or any of those things. Those are a lot of things that we talked about. So we talked about many different scenarios, what those parking ratios look like. So I just want to go on the record, yes, we talked about many different developments and options for the site, and if and when additional parking would be triggered. In this particular case, because he is kind of changing the use of the residents from commercial to residential, the applicability section of our UDC does require that we analyze parking for the development, and that's why Sonya had said, at least add some more surface parking, not necessarily the two garage spaces that's required by ordinance. So something to take under consideration this evening.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Okay, thanks, guys. Thanks, Sonya and Bill and Stephanie, I appreciate your help. Thanks.
Chris, do we have anybody signed up for public testimony this evening?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay. That being said, is there anyone in the room who would like to testify on this application? Okay.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Fitzgerald.
I move we close the public hearing on H-28-0097.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to close the public hearing on H-2018-0097. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Cassinelli.
Kind of following question to staff. In the review, what's been going on with the, you know, the review and updating the future land use map? Bill, is there, what, what's the, are we going to, is the desire to keep that stretch commercial like that? There's a lot of neat old homes down there, and I was kind of curious what the, what the plan is.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, great question. We're not into that portion yet of the update to the comprehensive plan, but as Sonya mentioned, we do envision Old Town here, which would allow some of those homes to remain as they are. They could remain as commercial or as residential homes. They could be converted to commercial uses. If memory serves me correctly, I believe this property was annexed, or at least rezoned to commercial in the 70s at some point in time before we even had a, a comprehensive plan. And that's why we see it being more of an Old Town, like a mix of uses or more intensification of the land use in that area. But I would also let you know that back in 2008 or 2009, our Urban Renewal District, MDC, went through a process of trying to get what we call Destination Downtown Plan. It's kind of an addendum to our comprehensive plan, and this is part of that Washington district. So there is a certain character that we do want to remain in this area. I don't see us changing much of that at this point in time, but it's certainly something that we'll be looking into or can take under further advisement as we go through, get further into that comprehensive plan update.
Because one thing you mentioned is that in, in changing this to, to Old Town and allowing residents, it could, you know, it could become a high-density residential without having to come back to planning and zoning? Is that what you said?
That is correct. Multifamily developments are principally permitted in the Old Town district.
I personally think, you know, there's a lot of old houses down there, and I think if he's going to use it for personal residence and really bring it back to life, that's probably a bonus for Main Street. And I think, you know, the access is the way they are, the in and out for that, the way that lot is arranged for that business in the back, I think works well. I would, I would be in support of it to have this Old Town if they want to use that as a residence.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Fitzgerald.
I, I have no problem. I think, being that it's commercial use now, it's tough to take it back to a residential property. But I think with the future land use map, it does, it's all overlay with Old Town now. I don't see that changing in the future. And so it does give Mr. Smith an option, or some options in the future going forward as that neighborhood transitions, whether that be more commercial. But I think it does, per Commissioner Cassinelli's comments, it limits how intense that commercial use can be. So, and that, so it gives us a little bit more, I guess, control over that as it goes forward. So I would agree. Even though I, it's hard to go back from a commercial to a residential use because everything around it is commercial.
Yeah.
I understand that's probably not where Mr. Smith will go down the road. He will probably use that land to develop it into something more bright and shiny besides his house. But I like that you want to fix it up, so I have no problem with the change.
I think if he makes his, makes it a primary residence, all bright and shiny, maybe it stays. I don't know.
Yeah, maybe so.
Any other comments?
No.
Want to hear a motion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Cassinelli.
After considering all staff applicant, public testimony, I move to recommend approval of City Council File Number H-2018-0097 as presented in the staff report for the hearing date of October 4th, 2018, with the following modifications, I think just the one, the additional parking space, is that correct?
I think it's in the staff report.
That's already in there?
Yeah.
So, okay, with, with no additional modifications.
I second that motion.
It has been moved and seconded to approve File Number, recommend approval on File Number H-2018-0097. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. So at this time, we will open, oh, we're continuing from September 6th and September 20th, H-2018-0081 EEG Office Building, and we'll begin with staff report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. The next applications.
Oh, no, we're supposed to do Westbridge.
Westridge, sorry.
Yes, Westridge. The next application's before you.
So, so let's try 2018-0088, shall we?
Trying to speed this up.
Next application's our request for annexation and zoning and a preliminary plat. This site consists of 12.71 acres of land. It's owned RUT in Ada County and located at 5745 and 5865 North Black Cat Road. Adjacent land use and zoning to the north are rural residential properties owned RUT in Ada County. To the south is future multifamily residential in the Oaks North subdivision, owned R15. To the west is a future school site, zoned RUT in Ada County, and to the east is North Black Cat Road and single-family residential properties in Bainbridge subdivision, owned R8. The comprehensive plan future land use map designation for this property is medium-density residential, which calls for three to eight units per acre. The applicant is requesting annexation and zoning of 12.84 acres of land with an R4 zoning district and requests council approval of a step-down in density from medium-density residential to low-density residential. Again, medium-density being three to eight units per acre and low-density being three or fewer units per acre. The proposed residential use and zoning is compatible with either the low-density residential or medium-density residential future land use designation. However, the proposed density at 2.4 units per acre is slightly below the minimum three units per acre desired in medium-density designated areas. The step-down in density is requested because, excuse me, adding more lots will require a secondary emergency access to be provided, and only one access is available to the site, and fire flow would need to be addressed differently as well. The geometry and characteristics of the site, i.e. the location of the McMullen lateral along- along the north boundary and the necessary public streets, impact the available building area resulting in a lower density than desired in the comprehensive plan. Preliminary plat is proposed as shown, that consists of 30 building lots and nine common lots on 12.71 acres of land in the proposed R4 zoning district. Proposed lots range in size from 8,096 square feet to 13,570 square feet with an average lot size of 10,060 square feet. There are two existing homes on the site. The one at the west end of the site will remain, if you can see my pointer here, on this lot here in the proposed subdivision. The other home and structures, accessory structures will be removed. One access is proposed for the development via North Black Cat Road. Two stub streets are proposed, one to the north, North Willow Side Avenue, and one to the south, Nor Oaks, North Oakstone Avenue, for future extension and interconnectivity with adjacent future developments. When the Oaks North property came into the south, their preliminary, excuse me, preliminary plat did show a stub street to this property that's in alignment with the proposed stub street. A 35-foot wide landscape street buffer is proposed along North Black Cat Road and entryway corridor in accord with UDC standards. There are several existing trees on this site that are proposed to be removed that do require mitigation as proposed by the applicant. UDC requires a minimum 10% qualified open space to be provided with development and a minimum of one qualified site amenity. A total of 1.6 acres or 12.5% of qualified open space is proposed with a segment of the city's multi-use pathway system, a micro path to the future school site to the west, and a tot lot with play equipment in accord with UDC standards. Conceptual building elevations were submitted as shown for future single-family residential detached homes in this development. Building materials consist of a mix of siding materials with stone veneer accents. Written testimony was received from the applicant, Jane Suggs. She is in agreement with the staff report and staff is recommending approval with the conditions in Exhibit B of the staff report. Staff will stand for any questions.
Any questions for staff? Would the applicant like to come forward?
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Jane Suggs. I work at WH Pacific, 2141 Airport Way in Boise, and I'm here representing Trilogy Development and also the Westbridge subdivision. I'm very pleased to present these applications for annexation, rezone, and a preliminary plat for Westbridge. I don't have a whole lot to add because Sonya did such a good job of explaining this and we have the landscape rendering in front of you. But just let, remind you that we agree with everything in the staff report, the total analysis, and also all the conditions of approval. So we don't have a whole lot to add there. As Sonya noted, it's 12.7 acres and being annexed into the city with an R4 zone. She talked a little bit about how we're coming in just under the three dwelling units per acre. Very rarely do I ask for a step down in a comprehensive plan. But in this particular case, we do have some geographic reasons, some geometry of the site that kind of restricted us to a certain number of units. And also, we wanted to provide the open space that we are providing on the site. And we think that these larger lots, 10,000 square foot minimum, some are eight, most, all of them are over eight. Some of them are, many of them are 10 along the north boundary. We think that that's a real nice complement to some of the smaller lots that you'll see just south of us and to the east. I did want to point out, of course, that we do have a separated sidewalk that runs from Black Cat Road to the potential school site that's on the west. So we have some, an area where it's separated sidewalk and shaded. We are adding a 10-foot pathway according to the master plan for your pathways. I don't even think it was on the master plan quite yet when we had our pre-application meeting, but we were asked to put that in and we will. That's along Black Cat. Again, we are providing significant open spaces. As you drive in, you'll see landscape medians and also an open space just to your right as you drive in landscaped. We had a neighborhood meeting in July on the site and had pretty good attendance. Most everyone there was interested in making sure we maintain irrigation. You see, you saw on your map that there were some larger lots to the north, they're in the county. One of those lots is heavily wooded and so we want to make sure that they have their, the irrigation water that they're required. Of course, that's a state law that we have to do that. And the schedule for development, I think this is one of those areas where people are anticipating development, knowing that it's going to come eventually. And I think this is a really good transition, again, from the higher density to the south and a little bit of a transition to those larger lots as well. So we, they may redevelop, they may not, but to have larger lots along that north border, I think is a really good transition for them. In summary, I respectfully request your approval, annexation, rezone, and the preliminary plat for Westbridge, and I can stand for questions.
Any questions for the applicant?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Jane, thanks for the information. On the north boundary, you have obviously the north lots. And I know there's a carbon sequestration lot in Larry Lane, that huge wooded area. You have a strip back there, is that common lot and is it going to be maintained by the HOA?
The HOA will have to maintain that. That actually is going to be where the McMullen lateral is now, which is a ditch and it'll be fully piped.
Okay.
So it will kind of be one of those areas. In fact, you'll see on the landscape plan, it showed that we were landscaping with turf closer to Black Cat. But once we're behind the homes, that will be some lower maintenance grasses. So we won't have somebody back there mowing all the time. It will be kind of left a little bit as a natural, but definitely maintained by the HOA.
No pathways behind anyone's houses?
No, no pathway. We wanted to keep the kids walking in front of the houses and in, in a shaded area and on a regular sidewalk. We think that's a little safer than trying to put them behind the houses, especially with the wooded areas and actually some crops in the, the second, the western larger lot. So we thought that was a more appropriate.
Thank you, ma'am.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Castinelli.
Jane, what are the width that the, of those lots on the, on the north side that are?
I think they're, I think they're 80. I think they're 80-foot widths. Of course, I can't read this because it's so small. I didn't bring a full-size plat with me, but yeah, I think they're 80 by some.
Okay. And then, a couple, a couple of questions, Madam Chair. That, the, the cul-de-sac in the middle.
Yes.
That is also a stub street to the south?
That will stub to the south, yes. We've, we've drawn that and designed that so that when that, and there is a stub shown on, and I don't think it was a plat, it was just a master plan that New Oak had. It showed that location and that will connect, just like a regular street.
Okay. And then the, at the end of the subdivision, the stub to the north.
Right.
That one I'm very curious about because that would require, uh, that would require complete redevelopment of that subdivision and that property to the north. It's a residential property to put that through. Was that, was that an ACHD requirement?
Actually, that was the city hoping that if there was going to be development of that western lot, not the eastern lot with all the trees, but the western lot, that we provided some access to that so that there would not have to be some other access. So that development, it won't, it will just, it will, it will make the location where that person has to develop it. That's the connectivity policies of the city to provide stub streets to properties that could redevelop. So there's no reason for him to have to redevelop that. I mean, it just, just like, just like when New Oak came in with their master plan to show where they wanted that southern stub to be, we had to kind of match that. I mean, we didn't have to, but it makes sense to because they've come in and shown us something and the city told us about that. So the city had asked us to stub to one of the two properties and we stubbed to the western one because we think that that will develop, if it develops, before the eastern one. I mean, if we don't, if you don't want it there, we can actually take it out, but it's part of the policy of connectivity.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Fitzgerald.
Sonya, you said something about connection to the Oaks. Is that somewhere they're going?
To the south.
Or is that my mistake?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, Commissioner Fitzgerald, there's, I'm sorry, did you say school or multifamily?
I said the Oaks. I'm sorry. May I?
So the Oaks is to the south and there's future multifamily plan there.
Got it.
R15 zoning.
There's nothing added to the north.
There's no concept plan, but they did show a stub street on their preliminary plat to that, to this property.
Got it, okay. And I was thinking it was to the north, so thank you for the clarification.
Any other questions? The applicant? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris, do we have any signed up for public testimony?
No sign-ins.
Okay. No sign-ins, but is there anybody in the room who would like to speak on this application? Then if there's no further questions for staff or the applicant, can I get a motion to close H-2018-0088?
So moved?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to close the public hearing on H-2018-0088. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
I am happy to see some larger lots.
I know. I was just gonna say, who's gonna do the first cartwheel?
Oh, I, I just, this looks like a nice little, it just looks like a nice project. I, I think they've done a nice job with, with the landscape plan and I just, it's great to see some larger lots.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't care what the reason is, if we, whatever reasons they had, we have larger lots and I'm thrilled. I'd love to see more of that in Meridian, so. And again, this is trying to foresee the future of a transition between some higher density and maybe a little lower, so I think it looks like a great addition.
Madam Chair.
Yes. Commissioner Castinelli.
Staff, can I, I'm just, that, that, the street going to the north. I, I have this vision that it's going to be stubbed for eternity, going into somebody, going into their backyard. I, I mean, and if that lot to the north is developed, they've got access it on Larry Lane. Do we need that stub street there?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Castinelli, yes, we do. The, um, let me just flip over here to the area on this. Larry Lane is a private lane, so.
It is?
It's, you know, it's not likely that it will continue in the future. Our city code restricts access to arterial streets such as Black Cat Road and requires cross-access and stub streets to be provided to adjacent properties, stub streets in the case of residential. So the applicant is complying with our code with what they're proposing.
Is there?
We also like interconnectivity between developments, comprehensive plan.
Can they stub it? Is there a way to stub it? But end the stub at the cul-de-sac, have that, have an easement for that and that be a, that be planted, it be green for now. See what I'm saying?
Who's gonna pay for the extension? That's the issue we, we run into with that kind of situation. The developer's responsible for installing the roads when they do a development and if, if it's not installed now, it's, it's not likely we'll get it in the future.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Fitzgerald.
Just, we dealt with that over by Woodbridge, going into that existing neighborhood, it was disaster. Like, there was an easement there and everybody kind of, and they fought and fought and fought on actually that road going through and it became a very bad problem. So you gotta do it or not.
Yeah.
And I live in a neighborhood where there's a stub street to nowhere and it's going to stay a stub street to nowhere. It doesn't look.
Makes for good RV parking.
Exactly.
Makes for a good turnaround for the skateboarders and that kind of thing. It, it's not that big.
Build a half-pipe there and.
Other than that, um, I, you know, I've, I don't think you're going to hear me complain too often about a, about a step, a step down.
Yeah.
It is, it's a nice transition. Even though the properties on, to the north are county, they're not city, I still, I mean, we, you know, I still want to always respect people that are, that are, are there, especially as we annex, we have to, we have to keep that in mind. So it's a good transition, I think, to, to those, to the homes to the north. There's that, there's the buffer with the lateral there. It'll be a transition to the R15, I guess, to the south eventually. I'm, I'm good with it.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Fitzgerald.
I agree. And I think the last time we looked at this, Jane, good job, this, because the last time we looked at this, there was dogs and ponds and I, it was a kind of a nightmare and I, yes.
Yes.
This is another property.
Not this one, but.
No.
But, yeah, sorry.
That's a different property.
Well.
Focus.
If you look at it, it's not. But anyway.
Similar.
Looks very similar, sorry.
I did the same thing. I, I was thinking about that last.
I was like, there's.
It's not the same one, but it's so similar.
It's not? I thought it was.
I had to like go back and look at that again.
Thank God.
The other one was further south.
Anyway, moving on. It's a great project, very well laid out, and I think you guys have taken your community around you into account. I appreciate it. I'm in support.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
After considering all staff applicant and public testimony, I move to recommend to the City Council File Number H-2018-0088. As presented in the staff report for the hearing date of October 4th, 2018, with no modifications to the staff report.
It has been moved and seconded to recommend approval on H-2018-0088. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Congratulations.
Just a couple more of those.
Now, let's take a stab at H-2018-0081 and we'll begin with the staff report.
Evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Before you this evening is a conditional use permit for what's called the EEG Office Building. The site consists of approximately 0.993 of an acre of land. It's currently zoned LO and located at 551 Southwest 5th Avenue. To the north is a multi-tenant office building zoned LO. To the west are single-family homes in the Franklin Square subdivision, zoned R8. To the south is a vacant or undeveloped land, zoned CG, and West Corporate Drive. And to the east is vacant undeveloped land, zoned CG and Southwest 5th Avenue. So to kind of further clarify why this is coming forward this evening for a conditional use permit, typically this is an approved use in the LO. The Troutner Park subdivision that was approved in, annexed in '95 and a plat approved in '96 required detailed conditional use permit approval for any parcel development within that subdivision. So that's why this is before you this evening. The comprehensive plan future land use map designation for the parcel is commercial. Now, the applicant submitted an application for a conditional use permit for a 9,950-square-foot office building and accessory storage on, as I said, approximately 0.993 of an acre in the LO zoning district. And the site plan depicts how the site is proposed to develop with the structure of parking, drive aisles, access, storage yard, and internal parking lot landscaping. The applicant is proposing to have an outdoor storage area as part of the development. And it requires the applicant to comply with the UDC in regards to outdoor storage as an accessory use. We have what are called specific use standards for that type of use. With a certificate of zoning compliance, the applicant shall provide detail of the required closed division fencing and gate. Part of a, part of the requirement for an outdoor storage area is that it be fully screened from view. And so the applicant's showing a gate here as well as fencing all the way around and we're just asking that he provides some further detail so we know what that fence looks like. Storage area as well, to the west of the building shall be paved with asphalt. Access is proposed to the site via one driveway from Southwest 5th Avenue in this location. Parking is based on the square footage of the building, which as I said, is 9,950 square feet. So a minimum of 20 parking spaces are required. The applicant is proposing 22. Bicycle parking is also required. It's one for every 25 parking spaces. One is, one is required of the applicant's providing enough racks to accommodate four bicycles. The applicant is required to provide a five-foot pedestrian walkway from the main entrance to the proposed building, to the, the main entrance of the proposed building, rather, to the perimeter sidewalk along Southwest 5th Avenue. Some of the details aren't shown in this, in this site plan or the landscape plan that we will get when they come in for their certificate of zoning compliance. Landscaping is required to be installed on-site. There's a 20-foot wide buffer required along Southwest 5th Avenue.[1771.71] There's a 20-foot wide buffer required along Southwest 5th Avenue, and they are showing that on their landscape plan. Additionally, with the Troutner Park subdivision, as you can see on the, the west side of the project, there's a 35-foot wide landscape buffer that was required as part of that development agreement, and it's already in place. We're working with the applicant a little bit on their architectural elevations. There are certain standards that have to be met with the architect, the architectural standards manual we have with the city in Meridian, with the, requires a mixture of materials, and we limit certain types of materials. In this case, the applicant, I believe, has some information for us tonight. Typically, this seems like a lot of metal to me to meet our code. I've asked him to provide some detail on what percentage that is of each facade so that we can look at that. Typically, we get that with the certificate of zoning compliance and design review, but because this specific subdivision requires quote-unquote "detailed CUP" approval, we thought appropriate to at least give you some of that detail this evening to deliberate over. So as I said, the applicant's required to go forward with the certificate of zoning compliance and design review, once this is hypothetically approved. Did not receive any written testimony. Staff is recommending approval. This type of use and the architecture generally fit the neighborhood, and as a separate recommending approval, I'll stand for any questions.
Madam Chair. Mr. Peru.
Josh, can you pull back, pull up the site plan again? So that blank area there between the covered parking and the building, that is gonna be used for storage?
Correct.
Right, okay. And the covered parking is for employees, or, I guess, I can.
Yeah, applicant can cover that a little bit better. I'm not sure exactly who's, who's to be parking back there.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for staff? Okay.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Castanelli.
Kind of have a random question, Josh. When's corporate gonna be finished?
I don't know. Short answer.
Okay. Yeah, the one.
We've got some projects kind of coming in the area.
Yeah, madam, madam Chair, members of the Commission, a couple things to update you on. One, as you know, there's a multifamily project under construction in the area that you guys acted on, on a couple years ago, and that's under construction, and they're constructing a portion of that roadway with that development, so we'll get that out to at least Meridian Road. And then that section that goes over the Ten Mile Creek and ties back into Waltman Lane, that's in, if and when that property to the south along the interstate develops. As you know, an application came for, before you, called Tanner Creek, and that was recommended approval by this body, but it went to City Council, and they had actually recommended denial of that comp plan change. So, that, that piece of the puzzle is still up in the air.
I guess I was, the, the, the part I was looking at was by the storage units there where that multifamily is.
That project's under construction right now, and so as soon as they're completed with that, that section of corporate will be constructed and be able to get out to Meridian Road. Yep.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Okay. Commissioner.
Josh, you mentioned a small component of the, of land that is unusable or unbuildable. Can you identify that for me, just so I understand what we're talking about?
This goofy little guy right here, kind of wraps around here. It's not big enough to really do anything with. It's, I think even ACHD even owns that? Or maybe they just own this piece, I can't remember exactly, but.
So one looks like a, like a store, or a water.
There's two. This is a stormwater retention pond here, that I know is ACHD, and I can't remember if they own this piece here or not.
It looks like it's an area like for storing sand or something like that? I don't, I mean, that's just, that's interesting.
It's like there's, to me, it looks like there's telephone poles.
Well, that, maybe that's, yeah. Interesting.
Not know what's going on there.
It's just, gonna, anyway, okay, thank you.
Odd. And then it looks like there's, yeah, like sand and some other things here. I'm not sure if it's ACHD that owns that and using it as a kind of a maintenance or storage area.
Future green area.
Strange.
Madam Chair.
Should we send them a bill for cleanup?
Yeah. Getting to that point.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Castanelli.
Josh, you, can you go back to the, the elevations there in the building materials? Because what I'm seeing, just a quick look around some of the other buildings in there, a lot of, a lot of brick. Is that, is that where you wanna, is that the direction you wanna go, that design review wants to go?
So, make sure I understand the question. We, we can't require them to build a brick building? So, is that what you're asking me?
Well, was there, and was there nothing in the, in the original, the original business park DA that was developed in '95, '96, as far as design standards in there? Okay.
And it's just Meridian's design standards?
So they're just gonna have to follow, they'll, they'll just follow Meridian's design standards? Okay.
Okay. All right. Would the applicant like to come forward?
Good evening, Madam Chairman and Commissioners. My name's Chad Slister, Slister Ugeron Architecture in Boise, 415 South 13th Street.
Could you speak up a little bit, please? Directly into the mic, sometimes there, there you go.
Is that better?
Thank you. Perfect.
Did you get my address and all that?
Dean, did you get it?
Okay. I'm representing the owner, and since this was, application went in, the property has actually sold to the original person I was representing to begin with, which is Chad McKibben behind me. Could you go to the site plan real quick? I wanna make a couple clarifications here. There is no storage in that open area. That was part of the original discussion, so the parking in the back is covered for utility vehicles and things of that nature, so their trucks will be parked there. We don't wanna have a bunch of stored materials out in that open space, so it's basically just maneuvering space for access to the covered parking and access to the, the storage component, which is actually in the, the one-story portion of the main building. Okay, so on, on these photos, it would be the piece to the, to the right. Yep. So, the intention is not to have a bunch of stuff, pipe and all that kind of stuff, or conduit, whatever, outside. It's all to be kept clean and nice. Go back to the, so, we, yeah, this is slightly different than the, the landscape plan. Originally, we had a few things that were different here with the initial staff report, which have been modified to this drawing, and the landscaping plan hasn't quite caught up with this necessarily. We've shifted the two-story component, so that north face wasn't totally in line and flat, so we give a little bit of reveal there. We do need to get a sidewalk in to connect back up to the, to the main there on 5th. Part of that staff report also indicated, you know, a need or to have a detached sidewalk, but since it's already there, leaving it in place and not tearing it out and removing it, or rebuilding it. Likewise, we did close up one of the, the entrances that currently exist onto 5th Avenue, so, which this drawing shows. There were two into that parking lot from 5th, so I think everything's good there. As far as the building components, oh, sorry, one more thing, back to that site. The owner of this property is also the owner of the Track Utilities property immediately to the south. So they have that entire chunk in the corner there of corporate, just to be aware. So, all those buildings are metal buildings, of course, so not that they're gonna look anything the same, but there's some commonality between some of his property components. So, now if we could go to the elevation. So I think that originally, the submittal was truly a metal building, not pre-engineered, but metal skin, other than the entry component and obviously the glass and stuff. So, in working through this, we've, we're working towards obviously the architectural standards required by the city. One piece of this that is not totally in compliance with the, that the code reads is, if metal's being used, you need to have two other primary field materials. So just to give you an idea, and to be a field material, it needs to be 20% of the particular facade. Glass does not typically count as, as that. However, that being said, we've, we've come back through and added, had several components to the building, some, some awnings for the south facing, glazing. We've added in some wood components, and, and some of the ribbon wraparounds that you see on the, the one-story, which start to mimic what we have on the main entry component. And normally, and we've also added in a base around the, the two-story component, which we're showing as concrete or CMU, to be determined, just depends, you know, cost and those types of things. And concrete itself is, unfinished concrete is not something that's normally allowed either, so it would be a architectural concrete that we would meet that requirement. However, it's not big enough to actually qualify as a field material. That all being said, the entry component, granted it is a lot of glazing, is, is beyond what you would normally see, and that component itself, we would like to have considered as one of the field components. We do have enough wood to be considered one of the two components in the overall facade, and adding a third component that is, meets that minimum 20% requirement. The building is disproportionate, I guess, as far as materials, because you'll have a whole bunch of stuff that's kind of equally weighted. And so that's kind of where we've headed, that's where we're, we're moving towards. The feel of things, to me, as an architect, is, is good. The proportions are correct. If we put in three materials that are really field materials, it's gonna look disproportionate. So, that's where we're at. I think we're, for the intent of, of the architectural standards, we're definitely close, if we're not already there. So, I would leave it, take any questions that you may have.
Any questions for the applicant? Bill?
No.
And I do have, I don't know if you wanted actual percentages, but I can give you those. I did do the calculation, if you wanna know those.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Fitzgerald.
Chad, is, are you in agreement with everything else besides the?
Yeah, yeah. That's the, that's the one piece that, and it's not that we're not in agreement, we feel that we're meeting the intent already.
Okay. Just wanna make sure.
We've made a lot of adjustments to get there. Like I said, when we started, it truly was a, a metal-skinned building with no base, no additional accent, other than just that main entry. So, yeah, we're, I think, we feel that we're there.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any public testimony?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay. Nobody, oh, nobody being signed up? Is there anyone in the room who wishes to testify on this application? Okay. All right.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Fitzgerald.
I move we close the public hearing on H-2018-0081.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to close the public hearing on H-2018-0081. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Fitzgerald.
Personally, I like this building, so I, and I think they did modulate different types of, different types of architectural, material components, and it sounds like they're doing the intent of meeting our architectural guidelines. And looking around, and I think Bill did the same thing, looking around the neighborhood, I think there's, this will be an improvement to some of the buildings that are around that area, and I think it looks very nice. I think Chad did a great job, so I, I would be in favor.
Yeah, at first glance, I wasn't sure if it meant architectural standards or not, just because it seemed like a lot of metal, but in hearing the presentation stuff, I think with the amount of landscaping stuff that's around here, and the building being what it is, I, for, you know, a lot of storage and everything, I think it's, I think it looks okay. But I would hold it to Meridian Design Standards and let them.
Yeah.
Figure it out. Yep.
I would, Madam Chair, I would be in agreement there, and there's no, there was no objection from any of the residences behind, so.
Mm-hmm.
It is, it is cool looking. Most of the other stuff is, oh, there is a mix back there. Some of the office buildings are brick, but then there's straight metal-skin buildings back there, industrial buildings, so it's a, it's a good blend.
Mr. Peru.
Madam Chair, I, I agree with my fellow commissioners. I don't really have anything else to add. I think it looks, I think it looks well-done. I really like the glasswork in the front, and how they've situated on, on the property, and they've done a nice job to buffer with residential area, so I'm, I'm agree. I'm gonna, I agree.
Yeah, I think they said glass isn't usually considered one of the features, but I think in this case, it almost is.
Yeah, it looks great.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Castanelli.
I'm gonna make a motion. After considering all staff, applicant, public testimony, move to recommend approval to the City Council file H-201H-18-0081, as presented in the staff report for the hearing date of October 4th, 2018.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to recommend approval on H-2018-0081. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Madam Chair, you guys are.
We're to not recommend approval, but to approve. I don't remember, as soon as I said it, I thought, I need to correct this. To approve, H-2018-0081. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Who wrote the staff report?
Okay, next, on the agenda is H-2018-0101, the public hearing for Meridian High School Auditorium, and we will begin with staff report.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, this is a, are two conditional use permits wrapped into this project for Meridian High School Auditorium. Site consists of approximately 33.37 acres of land, it's owned R4, located at 1,900 West Pine, which is the northwest corner of Pine and Linder. Adjacent land use and zoning to the north is a baseball field and residential properties in the Vineyard Subdivision, zoned R4. West is rural residential agricultural property, zoned RUT in Ada County. To the south is the school property, Pine Avenue, and residential properties in Marywood Subdivision, zoned R8. And to the east is school property, zoned R4, and Linda Road. As you can see, well, maybe you can't see, there's been a number of administrative CCC applications on this property since 2001. Each one, they've substantially increased the square footage of the property, additions and portables and tenants, lots of things. The comprehensive plan, land use designation for the property is Civic, and actually, let me go to the map here, so you can kind of see where we're talking about and get an aerial view. The applicant requests conditional use permit to construct a new 31,922-square-foot building addition to, to the school. And the proposed addition will be placed in the existing courtyard. So, let's kind of zoom in here and show you. This is the, this is the existing courtyard at the school. And will consist of an auditorium, a new lobby, new restrooms, a prop shop, dress, makeup rooms, and a new band room. Because the education facility is expanding, the UDC requires the approval of a conditional use permit. Public education institutions in our UDC require conditional use permit. There are specific use standards listed in the UDC as well, and education institutions that apply to be proposed, that apply to the proposed use. If approved, the proposed use is required to comply with those standards. As I said, there are two conditional use permits approved. One is just because it's a school and they're expanding the school. The second is, there's a non-conforming use on the property. So, Meridian High School has had several additions and improvements made to the site over many years, some predate the adoption of our current UDC. Due to the number of the improvements after the adoption of the UDC, the landscape ordinance requires some of the site to be brought up to meet current landscape standards. And the staff report, kind of, the applicant listed, the year and how much square footage was, was added to the property, going back to 1974. So specifically, UDC 11-3B-2D requires compliance with the landscape ordinance if the building on the site expands beyond certain thresholds. Because of the number of, of, the number of additions after 2005 is approximately 49% of the existing structures on the site, perimeter and right-of-way landscaping is required to be installed. Several of the expansions to the site, the applicant has incrementally increased landscaping to the site to comply with the UDC. The two areas that currently do not meet UDC standards are a portion of parking along Pine Avenue. Kind of show you. Typically, we require a 25-foot landscape buffer along Pine, along arterial streets, I should say. Does not exist there. Remember, right-of-way landscaping is required to be installed, and so it's the parking along Pine and portion of the site on the east boundary, north of the bus access. of site on the east boundary, north of the bus access along Linder Road. So there's, typically we require freezing shrubs as part of that landscape buffer. And there's, there's nothing on this frontage of the property either. Per UDC 11-1B-4, the applicant has submitted a conditional use permit to allow the school to extend the use of the non-conforming parking lot along Pine and to maintain the current parking stalls constructed on the site. As an alternative, the applicant is recommending the following improvements to the site. They will construct a new 25-foot wide landscape buffer with 39 two-inch caliper trees along Linder Road. Construct a new five-foot wide landscape buffer between the parking lot and the adjoining property to the west, seminary, with eight two-inch caliper trees. The new trees planted around the new auditorium will include five-inch caliper trees where possible for a total of 52 caliper inches. Because the applicant is proposing to add additional landscaping to the site, staff is supportive of the alternative landscape improvements as noted above. Staff highly recommends once this parking, once this parking area is scheduled for replacement at the school district, reconstruct the parking area and meet UDC standards, which would include that 25-foot landscape buffer along Pine. Additionally, there are quite a number of trees that are currently located in the auditorium or where the new auditorium will be constructed. Those will all need to be mitigated for, and the applicant will have to coordinate with the city arborist in determining how many of those. And I believe they may have already determined how many caliper inches need to be mitigated for, and those will be placed elsewhere on the property, which in all reality will probably equal some of the trees that are going out here that will help us meet our section of code. The applicant has provided a parking analysis to ensure the site has adequate parking in accord with the parking standards in the UDC. Under the UDC, non-residential uses require one stall per 500 square feet of gross floor area. Currently, the site is developed with 894 parking stalls, which exceed the minimum of 746 stalls required by code. So, though some may think it is not adequate for the number of vehicles that park there, it does meet UDC standards. Next is, there is a section of our city's multi-use pathway that runs along the Nine Mile Creek on the north side of the project. And subsequent UDCs, no requirements have been placed on the applicant or the school district to get us closer to having a pathway on that north side. So the city's master plan includes a multi-use pathway designated on the south side of the Nine Mile Creek since at least 2010, when the pathways' master plan was adopted. And as I said, we've done several CCCs or certificates of zoning compliance since that date and have not received any, no discussion actually, on any of the CCCs as to a pathway. We thought that this time, and we've asked the applicant as a condition to, not necessarily at this time, construct a multi-use pathway, but to get us an easement so that with the future CCC, we're able to get something there, coordinated with Kim Warren, who works in the Parks Department, she's the pathways coordinator, on how that would work. So the applicant, I think, will discuss that a little bit. They've been in contact with the irrigation district and have some information for us on that. Go back to the PowerPoint. This is a site plan. You can see there's a 900-some-odd-seat auditorium being constructed, and there will be some vegetation planted back in where they want it to be, not necessarily scattered throughout. So you can see some trees here, as well as a courtyard and some of the other rooms and band area there. These are the architectural elevations submitted by the applicant. Suffice it to say that the architecture will need to meet the City of Meridian Architectural Standards Manual requirements. As you can see, I'm not sure if you can, because it's a pretty small text, but the majority of this is metal as well. So we'll have to, we'll have to work with the applicant to make sure that they can comply with the Architectural Standards Manual. Did not receive any written testimony on this application. Staff is recommending approval. It's an expansion of an existing school. It sounds like the school district or the high school is in need of an auditorium. Stand, separate recommending approval, and I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions for staff?
Sure.
Commissioner Castanelli.
Since my middle name is parking, you did bring it up, but with, with putting in the buffer along Pine, obviously, it's going to lose some parking, but we're still going to remain above the minimum?
I don't know the answer to that question. I haven't done that analysis. So if that is the desire, and with the future expansion of Pine or with another CCC, you have to lose some parking, they'll have to make up for that somewhere else.
So they're not putting in the, in the landscape buffer at this time? Oh, okay. Sorry, I, I misunderstood that.
They're requesting alternatives to that.
Okay. This is where the five-foot landscaping would go along. This is the LDS Church's seminary building. So they'll put some landscaping in there, and they're going to put some landscaping out here along Linder. Those are the, kind of, the two with some trees, kind of the, what they're doing instead. Even though we can expand a non-conforming use with the conditional use permit, which is what they're requesting this evening.
Madam Chair. Commissioner Perrow.
The five-foot buffer there on the west side, why that location? What, is there any benefit to that, other than that's just an area that they can add landscaping? It doesn't, I, so I have a Meridian High School student, and that drive right there is already very narrow. So I don't, just curious why that location? Was that a recommendation that was made by the school or the staff or?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Perrow, they suggested that as something they would do in place of. Now, you can definitely ask them that question. I'm not, I'm not necessarily or against landscaping there. That's just something that they suggested that they would do.
Okay. And then the current auditorium, where's it located in relationship to the new one? Is it, are they going to keep both? And how many seats are in each? Do we know any of that, or is that something the applicant can answer?
Applicant can answer that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Would the applicant like to come forward?
My name is Scott Henson with Lombard Conrad Architects at 1221 Shoreline Lane, Boise, Idaho, 83702. And I was planning on getting up here and just telling you that I concurred with the staff report, but it sounds like there's quite a bit of questions for me. So I can go ahead and take you through the design a little bit, and hopefully just answer those questions that you have, as to what we're proposing for you tonight. The, the goal was to create a new auditorium for Meridian High School that would be in a similar vein to what they have at the other high schools within the West Ada School District. The existing auditorium seats about 200 people. It's really woefully inadequate for that size of a high school, where all the other high schools have auditoriums that seat seven, eight, 900 seats. So the goal here was to create an auditorium that would seat roughly 900. When we started the design process, we are currently at 780 seats, is what the, the plan has right now. We also wanted to take the opportunity to fix a number of problems that existed on that school site. Number one is when any of you visit that school, you're probably automatically drawn to that courtyard, thinking that's the entrance to the school. And in fact, it's not. When, when another firm, a few years ago, added different classrooms to that site, the new entrance to the building itself got moved further to the east. And you can see that in elevations. When you drive up there, you can still see that. But it's still, you're tended to gravitate toward that courtyard because it just sort of has that natural feel to it. Also, within that courtyard, there are about, well, well over a dozen entrance points to the various school buildings that are all separate from one another, are only connected by outdoor breezeways and ramps and catwalks. That is a major security issue that we want to try to alleviate. By filling that courtyard with a building, what we'll achieve is creating one single point of entrance to a lobby that'll serve both the gymnasium and the auditorium, as well as then create an internal circulation path from the academic buildings, the fine arts building to the north and to the athletic complex to the west. So all that circulation will be done internally now. So students don't have to go outside to get from one building to the next. So we've done, I think, a spectacular job in really taking a hard look at security, which of course is important to all schools now, especially. So like Josh said, the school, or the auditorium, rather, is going to be about 32,000 square feet, seat 780 people. The existing auditorium will remain in place. It'll probably primarily be used for lectures and just impromptu sort of things that don't require a more intensive use of a full-blown auditorium. So that would be its goal, to do that. With respect to the overall site, I'm going to hand out another handout, because in the electronic presentation, it didn't look like all of our submittal documents got to you. So if it's okay, if I can just pass these out. These were actually part of the submittal that went in. But on the second page, you'll be able to see more clearly where we are planning on putting trees that mitigate the requirement for expanding of the landscape of the parking lot. So you want to go to the second page when you get that handout. The reason why we're looking to extend the non-conforming use of the parking lot, as you could see on that overall site plan, there is no buffer and landscaping along Pine Avenue where the older parking lot is. In that area on, on the electronic monitor that you're looking at, where you see all the dirt, that is, that was an aerial that was taken during construction, but that is now a brand-new parking lot that is fully landscaped. There is a buffer along Pine. But our main concern is that if we had to landscape along Pine, it would take out roughly 40 to 50 parking stalls along that edge. And the school district's biggest concern is that even though technically we have more parking available to us than is required by the standards, in reality, the parking lot is pretty full, most of the time. And if we removed 40 to 50 stalls, the only place those children really have to park now is across the street in residential areas. They would be parking over there and then walking across the street, creating further hazard, crossing back and forth across Pine, not to mention, you know, parking in a residential neighborhood that we don't want to have happen. So we feel that the parking that is out there currently is sufficient for the need. We are not planning on adding more student body to the high school as a result of this addition. Even though it is 32,000 square feet, it's primarily that of just an auditorium. So there are no additional classrooms. There's no additional function to grow the school as a result of this addition. I can also hand out to you, sorry, I should have probably done this. We, we don't have that many copies of it. There are two that are not part of the original submittal, but gives you a better idea of what the floor plan of the building internally looks like. So you can see how the corridors will function and connect the fine arts building to the academic building and to the gymnasium. And I'm sorry, I should have focused on that first handout that was given to you. When we, on that second page, we showed all the new landscaping that we're proposing along Linder. We're proposing 32 two-inch caliper trees along Linder. We're also proposing more mature trees in size of caliper, in the addition of the auditorium itself. They're in the courtyard and around that area to give it a more mature feel as a replacement to those more mature trees that are currently residing in the courtyard. And your question as to why we are landscaping that small little buffer between the LDS seminary and the parking lot, we would rather not. That was, that wasn't staff's requirement. We were only trying to do that to help mitigate the, the whole issue with the non-conforming use of the parking lot. That is an expense that the school district would probably prefer not to have to do. I don't think it would really serve, serve to improve the parking lot or the functionality of that space. But that was just really sort of our attempt on trying to mitigate some issues. So we would love that to go away. And with that, I'll just go ahead and stand for questions. And I guess, by the way, we accept all the conditions of approval and the facts and findings of the staff report.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Perrow. Will there be events going on in the new auditorium that will have the public coming in the daytime in addition to the students? Are, any events primarily be happening in the evenings? The parking lot is pretty full all the time. So if there's going to be anything that's going on in the daytime, where there are additional parents or events going on that's going to use the auditorium, is that going to create a parking issue?
I can't speak for how they're going to be, you know, using it over the length of the life of that building. Generally speaking, if there's events during, and how they normally use high school auditoriums, if there's events during the day, they are normally there for the use of the students. So the students that are already there are taking part in that program. The majority of those kind of uses are after hours, you know, after most of the students have left. There might be that occasional thing, once in a great while, that there may be that. But I can't imagine they would, because there would be no place for the people to park. So it would be a scheduling issue within the school district.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? They talked about that pathway easement. Do you have an idea on where that might go?
Well, we spoke to both the irrigation district as well as the Parks Department on that. Parks felt that they did want to see the easement on the south side of the canal. There is already a roadway on the north side. Our initial thought was, well, just put that on the north and let the driveway that's already there serve as that pathway. There's obvious issues with, with that. So the school district is okay with granting the easement on the south side of the ditch. There is already a total 50-foot wide easement on both the north and south of center line of the ditch. So all we would do is simply overlay a new easement for the path on the south, and there shouldn't be any problem with that.
Yeah, I was going to say, I didn't think the irrigation district would be too happy with the pathway on their road, probably. So yeah, as long as on the south side, I think that'd be great. Madam Chair. Commissioner Perrow.
So right now, new addition and the, the old part of the school separated by the courtyard, and so the two, the looks, the materials are sort of separated now. But when you add this in, now we're going to have the metal right next to the brick. Is there any chance the school might bring that, the look of that brick in, you know, conformity with the metal building, or is it just going to stay that way?
Well, we've done a number of renderings showing how that's going to really appear. And we, we believe that as it's currently designed, is really the best look. We've taken a look at trying to bring brick and integrating into that. But it really becomes apparent that it's sort of a gratuitous effort to try to bring brick into a new design that doesn't really belong. Additionally, that brick is no longer available. So it can't be matched to that degree. So it would be, even though we can get something similar, it doesn't match. So our, our efforts in trying to bring brick into that new design just really didn't, didn't look very good. And I think, once you have the opportunity to see the three-dimensional renderings that we've done with this, when we take it through the CCC process, I think the design is stellar.
And, and there isn't any way to bring some of the metal or color elements onto the brick?
There again, I think that would, might be maybe a little bit of a challenge. I think it, it makes sense to have that clearly defined as to what was there before and what is new. We're really taking the cues. is new. We're really taking the cues from the more recent design construction of the classroom buildings, bringing it in, and really taking more of a theatrical kind of approach with the vertical metal accents that are kind of representative of like a keyboard that you'd see on a piano. It's that kind of character that we're trying to create for that and the massing of the two buildings. When you look at the mass straight on and elevation, it looks like everything is right out in front of you. But really, what you're seeing primarily is a large glass entrance that is pronounced, and it is significantly further advanced of the two-story kind of space that's behind it. So, there's a lot of three-dimensional quality that's going on with that massing.
I know Commissioner Perrow alluded to that driveway between the LDS church and seminary and the parking lot. You'd rather, she said it's already narrow. I don't drive in there ever. Is that something, I mean, I know you said you'd rather not have the expense of it. What, is that truly a safety hazard there, or what?
Well, no, it's not a safety hazard. That is actually an extra wide area. What people are doing is they are parking there, mostly pickup-drop-off kind of parking. It's not permanent parking. But for the most part, you know, people will find any place to pull up, to stop, to pick up and drop off. We would prefer that we just leave it as it currently is, without any modification to that.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Fitzgerald.
Just to follow up on that, if you were to go forward with the proposed adding trees there, you would bump it out or rip up the current sidewalk to add those trees?
It would be pushed out toward the parking lot for the width of that planting strip.
Yeah, okay.
Yes. So, it's not really limiting people from doing anything that they weren't otherwise doing. It just narrows it a little bit. I don't think it's, it won't make it any more or less dangerous. It just is an expense that we would probably rather not have.
Is there a way to disallow parking? If that's bumped out, can there be, can that be put in as a no-parking zone?
I suppose it could be.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Cassinelli.
Since we're on the subject of trees and plants, it looks like you're going, are you going over the required number of trees along Linder? And is that to mitigate the trees that are being removed? Can you address that?
Yes, sir.
Both?
That's the only reason why we're putting in that many trees, is the mitigation. When we take a look at the total caliper of trees that are within that courtyard, it's approaching ninety-some-odd inches. And where we have it right now in the proposed design is a little more than fifty. The issue is, a lot of the trees that are within that courtyard are relatively mature, and a lot of them are behind the ramps and the elevated catwalk, so you can't really even see them from the street. But because we're filling the entire area with the building, they're having to be taken out. So, we're hoping that we might be able to work with the city on maybe reducing the total inch-for-inch replacement, because otherwise, we're going to be looking for a lot of places to put trees that just don't need trees.
So, your preference would be to reduce the number of trees along Linder?
We're not asking for that, but it's more than what would be required currently in our design.
If you had it your way, you would put fewer in along Linder?
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Perrow.
So, that courtyard, a lot of kids eat there at lunch. It's a place where they spend time hanging out before and after school. Is there an area that's going to be replaced for them to do that and spend that time? Not necessarily landscaped, but is the lobby somewhere that they can do that, or is there, I guess I'm wondering where the students are going to go during those time periods, because it seems to me every time I've been there, there, there's tons of kids in that courtyard.
Right. Of course, that would be primarily when it's, weather that's applicable for doing that, or favored for doing that. The lobby would be useful for that kind of activity. It's going to be a nice glazed, open, arid lobby. But also, within the new kind of courtyard that we're creating outside that lobby, we are creating seating. We're creating a lot of landscape niches and things like that. So, there's still going to be quite a bit of outside space for them to be able to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Fitzgerald.
Just to clarify, there are additional trees you're putting back into that outside area.
Yes. Yes, sir.
Yes.
It'll be more nicely landscaped afterward than it is currently.
It is now.
Any other questions for the applicant?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody signing up for public testimony?
There are no sign-ins.
Okay. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to testify on this application? Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Fitzgerald.
I move we close the public hearing on something, H dash twenty-eighteen dash oh-one-zero-one.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to close the public hearing for H dash twenty-eighteen dash zero-one-zero-one. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I think it looks like a really nice addition. I think to put, you know, some trees out there by Linder to help mitigate that makes sense. I really don't have a feeling one way or the other on putting trees that we're just trying to mitigate inches along an already possibly congested area. I appreciate the easement for the pathway. I think it's a probably badly needed addition.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Fitzgerald.
I agree absolutely. I think this is a nice addition, very well-designed architecture. I think it blends, you look the whole, the broad look of the school. I think it takes that stone to the metal, and it kind of provides a nice centerpiece in between, which I think is great. I do appreciate the security concerns that are mitigated with this new addition. I like that we're shifting from one courtyard to a nicer, more, maybe better landscape courtyard, maybe with more seating areas and those kinds of things. I, to be totally frank and honest, this parking lot is going to get redone, and they're going to rip it out again. So, I don't understand why we're adding trees that we're going to tear up again. I guarantee it's going to happen.
As well as Pine is probably going to get redone and do some landscaping then.
We redid the parking lot in the center, and that's been landscaped properly. So, I think we're kind of adding a Band-Aid that doesn't need a Band-Aid for, just to mitigate something that I think is being well taken care of with the trees on Long Linder, with the new courtyard redesign, and then the pathway that they're requesting. I think we're balancing that out properly without having to add trees to an area that doesn't really need them.
Doesn't need them.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Cassinelli.
I'm in agreement with all that. The only other thing I would say that I brought up, I don't know that we, that they really need to be required to put in as much, as many trees along Linder. Honestly, I kind of like driving by there and seeing the football field and everything that's in there, and it's going to be a jungle when they get done with that many trees. And if they're just trying to equal inches, I don't think that's necessary, you know, as they stated, the trees are mature. So, I would be comfortable with just whatever the minimum recommendation is along Linder. And I don't know what that is, but if we just went with the minimum.
What code currently requires for, yeah. Yeah, I think so too, because otherwise you're going to end up with some, like some of these subdivisions have had to go in and take out trees just because it's overgrown ten, twenty years down the road, so.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Perrow.
No, I completely agree. I also like that you can see the buildings and the field, and so putting those trees there is going to, you know, that field actually, from what I understand, is used for a lot of soccer practice, lacrosse practice. And so, not having the view from the street, I think is, I personally don't think is great, but I understand why the city's requiring that. And as far as the trees along next to the seminary, I don't see a need for those to go there. I just, I think, you know, if they don't create a no-parking area, there are cars parked on either side of that entrance. The parking is, I understand that they have met code with the parking, but the parking is very difficult, having a senior who parks in the residential area because it takes him thirty-five, forty minutes to get out of the parking lot after school. So, anything that they can do to keep those driveways wide would be, would be great.
Madam Chair, just quickly, we have a, just because it seems like you're going this direction, we have a condition in the staff report. As you can see, there is 1.3 that requires the applicant to comply with the mitigation standards listed in the UDC, which essentially makes them replace caliper for caliper and coordinate with Elroy Huff and the Parks Department on whatever that means. We added 1.4 because those are the things that the applicant suggested that they would do to help mitigate not putting some landscaping in along Pine and some of the other things. I don't know that we need to be that specific. I'm comfortable with maybe not having 1.4 in there if you don't want that to be there because we're, he's going to have to do whatever Elroy requires of him to do based on the UDC. And I, not that it matters, but I kind of agree with that five-foot along the seminary building. It seems kind of like they're adding it just because they thought it was something that they could do. Now, if some of those trees in that area are required caliper inches, they'll need to go somewhere else on the property. But I don't know that that's necessarily the best spot for them to go. So, we're covered either way. They're going to have to mitigate based on what the UDC requires.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Perrow.
So, Josh, are you saying that they could choose to put trees in other locations, not necessarily having to do the twenty-foot wide buffer, or do they have to do the buffer on Linder? They do?
That would make that compliant with code. So, that helps us, based on my analysis of the staff report, as they add to the building, they have to be more compliant with code. That gets them that.
Okay.
So, that we want to have happen.
So, it's adding the trees and the compliance with the code?
Correct. Correct. So, they're doing that to help comply with code, but some of the other trees can go elsewhere on the property.
Go elsewhere. Okay. Great.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Fitzgerald.
Just to follow up, Josh, so you're saying we can leave 1.3, let them work with the arborists, but take 1.4 out and we will still meet UDC standards?
You got, the intent there is, A, they asked us what they said they were going to do, but because the applicant suggested that you might want to do something different. I'm not the expert in mitigation and where they need to go. That's Elroy. So, rather than dictating exactly where they need to go, I think that the best idea is to let them work with Elroy on that.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, just for clarification, we do want the twenty-five-foot buffer along Linder, and then one tree every thirty-five linear feet per the codes. And again, gets that site a little bit closer to compliance because of the building expansions that have occurred over the years. So, I think the applicant's amenable to that. I don't know how much frontage they have there, but it's certainly not going to total thirty-nine trees. It's probably going to be half of that, inner fifteen trees at most. So, really, your biggest concern is, we can have a condition that they install a twenty-five-foot landscape buffer. We can rewrite condition 1.4 to say the applicant shall install the twenty-five-foot wide landscape buffer in accordance with the UDC standards, eleven-three-B-seven, and then the rest can be left alone with 1.3, and they work with Elroy on the mitigation.
Yeah. So, eliminate 1.4.2 and 1.4.3, and 1.1 just reads the twenty-five-foot buffer. Doesn't necessarily have to be thirty-nine.
That meets UDC standards.
Yeah.
Strike 1.2 and 1.3, is that what you said?
Yeah, 1.4.2 and 3.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So, just leave it 1.4 is 1.4.1?
Yeah. But it just needs to be a twenty-five-foot wide buffer that complies with UDC, what Bill said.
Seven.
Along.
Scott, unfortunately, the meeting is closed for a second, so.
Yeah. I think we'll get there.
If you want to talk to Bill, go chat with him real quick.
Do you want to sing?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Perrow.
So, I agree with Commissioner Fitzgerald. I really like seeing what they're doing with this in regard to safety, because that is, that is an unsafe area. There are several places where the concrete is uneven. There are several areas that just, it's not, it is, there's ramps, there's, it's really not great from a security standpoint or a safety standpoint. So, I think it's progressive of them to go ahead and use that space for that instead of trying to add it on to another area of the campus. So, I think that's fantastic in that regard. And keeps them inside in the wintertime, not having to go outside and that kind of thing. So, I think that's a good design in that regard.
Is there anything you'd like to add, Ms. Parsons?
Well, I would love for you to get to the decision, but I just had a conversation with the applicant, and he's informed me that Elroy did meet with them on the site, and he is wanting caliper inch for caliper inch to be replaced on the site, which puts us in a little predicament. However, the UDC does allow for alternative compliance to any section of the landscape ordinance. So, if that is your pleasure, then certainly you can make a recommendation that the applicant submit an alternative compliance with their certificate of zoning compliance and design review application, and we can take that under consideration at staff level.
Okay. Or is this, I've got a suggestion, or is this impossible to track, that some of that mitigation be considered when that portion, that old parking lot is redone and landscaping goes in there? Wouldn't that be part of it?
Madam Chair, members of the commission.
Is that impossible to, or just do yours?
Difficulty there is, that's, I love the creativity there. The difficulty is, code is going to require a certain number of trees in mitigation, so you can't count those trees. You can only count for those that above and beyond what code is going to require. So, the code's going to require a tree, and planter island's going to require a certain amount of trees along the buffer. So, really, the only way you could get there is to add a bunch of trees to this particular property.
Okay. Or go for alternative compliance.
Or go through alternative. Madam Chair, I'm totally okay with letting the staff, at that staff level, determine what alternative compliance will make sense.
Yeah.
And putting trees in front of the seminary building does not make sense to me.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Perrow.
If this, you know, if it was in the school's best interest, I would like to see some of the trees planted in other areas. Just, there's a lot of blank space where it'd be nice to have some additional trees. But I know that some of those spaces are used and have purposes, so you can't stick a tree right in the middle of the lacrosse field, but.
Maybe along the future pathway.
Yeah, along the future.
Yeah, the pathway. You could line up trees before it's built.
Right, along the future pathway is.
Yeah. I mean, there's a lot of places you could put trees. Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yep.
Madam Chair. I'm going to try a motion.
Commissioner Cassinelli, please do.
After considering all staff applicant and public testimony, I move to recommend approval to, recommend or just approval with CP. Okay. I move to approve file number H dash two-zero-one-H, two-zero-one-eight dash zero-one-zero-one as presented in the staff report for the hearing date October 4th, 2018, with the following modifications: strike 1.4.2 and 1.4.3, and add in, I want to order that, alternative compliance, to seek alternative compliance in the CZZ for landscape.
I think you're meaning to say that the landscape buffer along Linda Road meet UDC requirements?
Correct.
That works.
That works.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve item number H dash twenty-eighteen dash zero-one-zero-one with modifications. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. I'd like the honors of the last motion.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Perrow.
We close the public hearing for the date of October 4th, 2018.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Yippee!
We've gone from...